Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018 Byram Hills Board Meeting. We are calling the meeting to order at 7:14 and the Board is going to first go into Executive Session to talk about six items: District Matter Retired Employee, District Matter Individual Employee, Personnel Matter Individual Employee, District Matter Security, Legal Matter Transportation, and then Board of Education Matter Board Retreat. So with that, we're going to go to Executive Session and we will be back shortly.
I think we need to do a motion, right? I need to take a motion?
Ah, okay, so could I ask for a motion to go into Executive Session?
Someone, second.
All in favor? Okay.
Great.
Thank you, Robyn. 23rd Board of Education Meeting, please rise for the Pledge. The Pledge of... Oh! The Pledge of Edutainment.
(Inaudible) America, (inaudible) hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the very being that is all.
(Inaudible)
It shows you the mechanics if you do something over and over. You're going to pledge allegiance to the phone. So, all right, well, as we stated when we started the meeting, we first went to Executive Session, there were no changes from the Executive Session items that we spoke about when we started the meeting at 7:14, and we went into Executive Session at 7:15. So we move on to comments from the public. Are there any comments regarding any items that are not on the agenda tonight? Hearing none, then I would ask for a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
Second.
All in favor? All right, motion carries, and so now we go to our consent agenda, and that's for Personnel Item 6.1, Special Services Item 7.1, and Business Item 8.1. If I get a motion to approve the consent agenda for those three items.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? All right, excellent. So with that, we move on to Item 9?
Yes, Item 9. So besides deciding to rename the Tappan Zee Bridge, which was a large event for our governor, the governor has also declared October 22nd to 26th to be School Board Recognition Week, which I find so much more favorable than renaming the bridge.
I agree.
I just want to take the time during this Board meeting to recognize our Board members. We have an incredibly professional Board, and I have been privy to other Boards in other districts, thanks to the interweb, and I do not see what I see here on a daily basis. To be a superintendent, or a school administrator, or a teacher in a district, you have to trust implicitly. I trust our Board, and I also truly feel that the Board has their trust in each and every one of us. So I want to thank you. This is time that you are taking away from your families for the greater good, and we don't always see people who are carving out time in their lives to do that. I spend a lot of time with the Board. I am surprised I haven't stayed at any of their houses yet. We spend a lot of time together. But I want to say that it's beyond spending time looking at budgets. You have helped us through some very critical times. We had a transition last year of Mia as a new superintendent. We also had the interim position of an Assistant Superintendent for Business, and now transitioning to a new Assistant Superintendent for Business who's coming to the district. And I can say that Byram Hills has never been stronger than we are right now as a whole organization, and it is due to this Board. So we recognize you today, and we thank you for your support of us, your support of this community, and these children. We would not be in this position today had you not been here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So Jen, if I may comment, I was able to speak directly to Lori today at my principal's coffee and thank her in person, but on behalf of the faculty, staff, and students of Byram Hills, I really want to thank you for your tireless dedication and commitment to our community. The conversations that circulate around our Board are about your positivity, your professionalism, your willingness to collaborate, and we really have a lot of faith in your leadership. And we really thank you for all that you do throughout the year. We appreciate you today and all days. So thank you very much on behalf of our entire community.
And we have a beautiful gift of a reusable Byram Hills water bottle.
Thank you.
And of course, Janine, the water bottles actually are thanks to Chris Walsh and his idea, and the cookies, of course, are thanks to Janine Guastella, who cares very much about Board appreciation.
Thank you.
Right now, I would like to, because this is an important moment for Mia. Last year, when I gave out the School Board Recognition Certificates, I said that everyone should go home and put this on the fridge. And Mia went home and put hers on the fridge and took her picture and sent it to me.
So did I.
Lara, this is for your fridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my fridge.
It's your A+. Thank you.
This is my 20th.
Thank you, Mike. Janine even put them in order. Thank you, Robyn. This is the stuff we love.
I think I should...
I'm going to find that picture.
I think I should announce publicly because of this, that not only is it wonderful to receive this, but it's wonderful to receive this in the context that, one week ago, my beautiful granddaughter was born. And those of you who know my son Eric, and many of you do, he's a proud father for the second time, and beautiful Skylar is safely ensconced somewhere in Minnesota. Hopefully, we'll see her soon, but we're very happy. Mother and daughter are doing very well.
And congratulations on 20 years and an unbelievable amount of contribution to this district over an incredible period of time.
I'm waiting for my pay raise, by the way.
You keep waiting.
We're going to give you double what you get now.
Double my pay, that's it.
All right, well, that means a lot to us to hear all those kind words, and so we thank all of you for your partnership, and we look forward to now transitioning to the next discussion, which actually is, I think, a great discussion to have after that, because I think one of the things that we've been talking about recently is our Board Goals, which we passed at the last Board Meeting, and the importance of just making sure if you have a well-functioning organization that everybody's aligned. And I think when we think about our Board Goals, and you think about your administrative goals, and then there are goals for each building, there is a lot of thought around that alignment at the end of the day in order to push things forward. And given the amount of change that we've had in the district, if we look at curriculum, if we look at programs, and we've changed an incredible amount of things over the years to be innovative, and that only happens, I think, if you have alignment of everybody kind of moving in the same direction. So we appreciate the two-way dialogue in this night, is I think a good template for just having that discussion and dialogue and listening to the work that you've all done. So we look forward to it.
Great, and we'll begin our curriculum conversation. A number of weeks ago, I was sitting at home reading through our administrative goals, and my son was sitting at the table and said, "Do they really put that much time into their curricular goals? Do you think they do this in other places?" And, you know, he was in awe of just the amount, the plethora of information that's coming from each individual department, but when I told him that, you know, the purpose of these goals is really to look at student outcomes, that's when it occurred to me how significant these goals are. So we started with something very brave a number of years ago, with our inquiry questions, and we're now actually at the point where we are looking at the purpose, the process, and the results, to see what are these student outcomes that we want to achieve. So we ask people to step out of their comfort zone and to start to ask questions, and then look at how they are going to do this. Gina, Tim, and I took on as our goal, you'll see, to really support leadership. We understand that we have incredible administrators in this district, and we all need to support each other in having that leadership extend out to the buildings, to the teachers, to the classrooms, in order to reach the students. So on our end, we have been working together with a shared text on leadership, and we have been trying to address these goals together in a rather prescriptive manner, which we find is helpful to us in our learning goals. Learning Leadership by Kuz and Posner is the text that we chose to look at, and they have what they call the Five Fundamentals of Becoming an Exemplary Leader. First and foremost, it is about taking these risks, but looking at what our calculated results would be. So tonight, our team is excited to join the Board and to share some of our curriculum goals, and I love this because it's an opportunity for a conversation. This is not scripted. This is an opportunity for people just to talk about their craft and what they're doing with their buildings. So, Tim, did you want me to turn it over to you to get started?
Sure.
And I also want to say I appreciate so much that everyone came out for this, and I'd like to introduce Christina Wilson, who is in our Guidance Department, and she is currently studying at Manhattanville College for her Educational Leadership Degree, and she has been joining us in a lot of conversations. So, welcome to you, too.
Yep, and thank everyone for coming out tonight. You know, it's a long day for us. I want to say too, Jen, that it's such, I have such pride working with this team. When you read through this Goals Document, I'm just always thrilled at the work that we're doing, and it's, I think I have a really fun job because I get to work with all of these amazing things happening across the district, and I get to see it in classrooms, which is really great, and I thank you all for the work you're doing, because you're doing the heavy lifting back in the buildings. Scott talked about alignment, so let me start by saying how important that is to us, and at our Administrative Retreat, we talk a lot about making sure our system is aligned. And we always start with our mission statement. An environment of mutual respect, the Byram Hills School District and its community will provide students with the means, the knowledge, and the opportunity to excel in order to become productive and responsible citizens of the 21st century. That is what we're working on every day, and we want to make sure our goals align to that outcome. And that's how we test that our goals are meaningful and purposeful. And with that, conversations we've been having throughout the community is talking about this idea of excelling and rigor. What does that really mean in Byram Hills? We know we have a strong academic program, and we continuously strive to make it better. We know we get about 70% of our students into the top 12% of colleges in the country, and we're very proud of that. But we also want to make sure that we're creating students that are healthy, and happy, and emotionally and socially well. And so we keep asking ourselves this question, is how do we balance a rigorous academic program with the social and emotional wellness of students? That's something we're taking very seriously. So while we want to maintain a strong curricular program, and strong emphasis on academics, and continue to get our students into the best colleges, providing them with the best opportunities for them, we also want to make sure we're creating kids that like learning, that are happy to learn and be in school, that have good relationships with friends and family, adults and teachers. So that's really important to our community. So we keep asking ourselves that question. So you'll see a lot of our goals focus on emotional wellness, and I know you've heard from us talking about our programs with Yale, and Stanford, and University of Michigan, and those are all really important partnerships for us to find ways we can bring that work to our kids. So with that, we're going to engage in a conversation about our goals. We'll certainly invite the Board to jump in, and I have a few questions that I could ask. I could talk with everyone of them for at least an hour, so please jump in and ask the questions you want to ask. I'm not sure what I'm asking is what you want to know, but I'll try and frame that, but please make this a discussion.
Can I just say that the written material we have on this was excellent?
Thank you.
I mean, all of you contributed to this written material. I found this to be enormously helpful, so thank you. It was very good.
It's a rich, extremely detailed document. I know we spent a lot of time on it. I thank all of you for that as well.
I don't know if Deepak worked that hard on it, but everybody else did. Really, everyone else worked very hard.
How about Melissa? Did Melissa work hard on this? Singing out.
Yes.
So, yes, they do. We have lots of conversations, a lot of collaboration on this document, and discussions about it, meeting our mission statement. So we'll go back to our mission statement. So let's, again, the Board, jump in any time, and I'll start with our youngest learners over at Coman Hill, and ask the question, "We think about that balance of rigor and academics, does that really apply K-2?" So I'm wondering, you are preparing your students, and I know you take very seriously your preparation of the academics at Coman Hill, that you are sending kids to Wampus with the reading and writing skills, and the math skills, and the social skills that they need. Can you talk about what it means at Coman Hill to find balance between emotional wellness and rigor? What's that look like?
Well, we definitely always strive to work for those 21st century skills. I'll give you an example, just actually today and also last week, I was in our TLC Technology Library Center, and the children were presented with a challenge, and that challenge was, they needed to make a schoolhouse, excuse me, a tree schoolhouse that had to be up high because the land below was infested with alligators. So they had to use architecture to design, they had to work in small groups, they were collaborating. There was a lot of critical thinking. Youngsters were saying things like, "Well, we need to make our structure safe, we need to have support beams." There was a lot of negotiation, some people wanted a pool, others didn't. And then the art of persuasion came along there, too, and the girl persuaded the boy that, yes, we needed a pool. But there was also, a lot of thought went into this. One group was saying, you know, "We really need to have a big library, because we need to research about alligators to make sure that we're safe." And the thought process here really was able to have a lot of that rigor, but also children loved it. You know, the smiles that you saw as they were learning, the soft skills, they had to learn how to not just express their ideas, but also read the body language of their classmates. And I feel they really were learning, too, that by working together, we can create a better end product. So we're really grateful for the BHF for, you know, providing us with this fabulous space where we can do all these activities and these challenges, and it was an excellent example of problem-based learning at its finest at Coman Hill.
And I know that you do take that balance really carefully with teaching kids how to learn and grapple with content. Also, I hear feedback from parents, too, at that level, that they want their children to have time to play, you know, they want recess time, you know, they don't think we're nervous that kids, we know that strong academics are coming, and can this time be pure and have some time for play? What is that balance, and where do kids find time at Coman Hill for play?
Play is something that we hold near and dear to our hearts at Coman Hill, because there is a curriculum in play, and that is their learning language skills, how to express themselves, also how to, once they get in, problem solve. If we, if Teresa and I are on that play space and we disagree, we have to really problem solve on how we're going to make our time together work for all of us. We're also crafting our environment to meet our needs. So we very much value the power of play, and we have given each teacher a challenge, and that's to find 10 additional minutes a day of play, because research has shown us that when we give children some time to become physically active, when we re-engage them in the classroom, they're more available for learning. And teachers have come to me and said, "You know, I'm really seeing a difference. I take them down to the play space, we go back up, and I'm finding they're ready to learn, and really ready to get back into some of that academic rigor."
Is the play, is the additional play time the same for all classes?
That is the challenge, 10 minutes a day.
I mean, I would imagine additional play time at 10:00 in the morning may be different than 1:30 in the afternoon.
It's not, it's not a set time. The teacher is able to determine that time, and sometimes it would be either outside or inside, but sometimes it could be in the classroom, and it can be linked to the learning that's involved. So for example, if we're studying communities, it might be designing communities out of blocks, and Mia might be writing some of the rules for the communities, and Teresa could be, you know, one of the community helpers.
I just have to say that the indoor playground that was given to us generously by the Byram Hills Education Foundation, I mean, you hear kids, they come in, "We're going to have indoor recess today, right, Mrs. Latizia?" Because they are so excited. I mean, you go down there, it's like, awesome, and the kids are really enjoying, enjoying it. Teachers also have the opportunity, they can sign up and also, you know, aside from recess time, they can go downstairs with their classes and have those 10, 15 minutes extra of play time. And it's important when they're in that play space that they're also learning those soft skills, like to negotiate, you know, "I want to go down the slide first," or "You should go down..." So they have those chances to really, you know, compromise with each other and learn how to play and have fun. But in addition to the play space, there's also other opportunities for kids to do arts and crafts if they want, because sometimes they may not be wanting to run around at that time. So there's the Legos, they can draw, they can do lanyards. So again, all these opportunities where they can have fun, and those brain breaks that they really need.
Let me just ask a question about a kid who maybe during the indoor playground isn't in the mood for that, or might be having a bad day, or just is not feeling like that interaction. What does that kid do in that play space? Is there opportunities for them?
We do, yes. As Teresa had mentioned, there's a variety of other activities. We do have a reading nook, which has some bean bags, you can get some sensory input from there, and that also could be your quiet time, just to immerse yourself in a book. So we definitely have a plethora of activities based upon a child's emotional needs at that particular time.
Okay, thank you. So let's move over to Wampus, and we have Peggy and David, who are new leadership team over at Wampus. So I want you to pick up a little bit with that transition from Coman Hill, but before we even do that, as new leaders of Wampus, can you just frame for us what your, you've been doing this now since July 1st, so I know it hasn't been that long, what are the priorities for you that you see as you are leading through the year at Wampus?
So our basic priority, top priority, is our children. Everything we do is filtered through what's best for our children. Everything we do, from the smallest task to the greatest vision, it's filtered through our children, and that's number one. What follows that is getting to know every single child and understanding their strengths, and how their strengths can help us target and support them with their weaknesses. So Dave and I have really spent the first six weeks getting to know our children, and actually sending that message out to every single faculty and staff member, from our custodians to our secretaries, our job is to know our children and to know their parents. It's been a big task in doing that, but that's our goal, our children.
Then talking about the students, because your goal and your question is about creating confident and independent learners. Can you talk about the independence piece and why that's important?
So I often say that these stage of development, childhood development, probably are some of the happiest years in the home, because children are moving into an independent era in their childhood, and one of the biggest things that I know about kids is when they come in as five, six, seven-year-olds are very confident. My job is to build on that confidence with Dave, so that our kids leave fifth grade with more confidence than when they entered third grade, and they come to us quite confident. We need to build on that, because as a community, children leaving fifth grade need to be confident in the decisions they make, in the independence that their parents are affording them, in the independence that the schools are affording them, and we have to nurture that in a very safe way. So Dave and I have implemented at Wampus at community meetings, which kind of goes to our mission statement, really building a tight knit community that we all know each other. So every Thursday morning, we meet with one grade level at a time, and we talk to them about things that are happening in their week, good things that we're hearing, really great feedback, things that the children want to talk about, and then once a month, we're coming together as a whole school community, and we're celebrating the great things that they're doing in terms of positive behaviors, positive emotional expectations, and academic rigor. We have high expectations on ourselves, on our teachers, and on our children, and we're filtering that right through the lens of our children in these meetings.
So can you give a sense of what happens at that, how students are reacting to these meetings?
Students are close.
Because Jen and I visited, and we just are in awe of what's going on, but can you give the Board a sense of what one of these looks like?
So it kind of was a big risk on our end, because I went into July 1st with Dave, and I said, "We're going to have these community meetings, we're going to run the curriculum, and we'll be all set." And then it dawned on me that I need to let the children drive those meetings. So the first meeting that we had, we just opened it up, we welcomed ourselves to the kids, and we said, "We're really here for you. This is your meeting, your time with us. Talk to us about what you need from us, and we're going to filter our time with you through all of the things that we're noticing." And slowly doing that, we're also raising the expectations of what we want for them and what they want for themselves. So we've been, we're in October, and we've been kind of letting the meetings take on their own shape by what the children are dictating. We've filtered through, I mean, month of September was really welcome to Wampus. This past month was really all on about, "Look around, of the superheroes all around you." We did a photo gallery of all the things that the teachers do throughout the building, and the kids had to go on a scavenger hunt and try to figure out where they noticed all the positive quotes that the teachers put throughout the building. That are deliberately done, but we tried to build them to bring them all together in a community lens. And then the kids had a kind of like, "Oh, I saw that in that hallway." That also translated back over to, "Your job is to read a room. You can read now, and as your parents trust you more to read and cross streets, you need to know to read everything around you." So we're kind of like embedding a whole bunch of things in them, and the kids are just loving it.
They're giving us a lot of feedback, too, like even during lunch, when we're walking around getting to know the kids, they'll give us feedback about it, too, that, "I found that thing, there was Mac and Ernie were saying that was over the third grade wing." So they're engaging with us, and they're starting conversations, which is really nice.
And in one of the sessions I went to, Peggy made a kid stand up and address by standing, and the kid wasn't talking very loud, and Peggy would say, "Can you say it so that student back there could hear you?" And, you know, the kids are learning.
I've seen her say that to teachers, too. It's great.
Yeah, so it's modeling, and these kids are confidently standing up in front of their entire grade and asking questions and engaging in a discussion remarkably so easily.
I have a question. I mean, I think confidence is a great goal, and I'm looking at the result column on your document. Do you feel you can objectively measure it by what you laid out here, or is it more of a motive anecdotal sort of measurement?
So that's a challenge for us, because it's something I've struggled with. You can, you can feel when a child's not confident, you can feel when a child is confident. I want to start studying, how are we staying a step ahead of that child who's starting to doubt their confidence?
Does that require an interaction with you or with David, or is that an interaction that's occurring with the teacher? And how do you really track the confidence level of each student in your school?
So a couple things to that. It's an interaction with every single community member who touches that child. So for example, parents are a big partner with us. We need to understand what you're seeing at home from your child. So I'm really engaging with our faculty, and we need to call home, we need to talk to parents, we need to understand what they're seeing about our children as they grow and develop. So it's not just me or Dave, it's all of us having a hand in that child, because we're part of that child's team.
Slightly different question on the academic curriculum, relating back to this, though, for sure. There've been so many changes over the last, like, five years with grades three through five, with new math standards and DLA stuff, and just about every subject. And through the course of that, just naturally speaking, there was just a lot of, it was confusing from the state for a long time. And do you think we're at the point now of like curricular stability from the state standpoint? And do you, overall, I'm sure there are pockets, but do you think that the state has it right in terms of kind of where, what kids should be learning at different points in time, and that balance between some of the things you're talking about here and those core academics?
So when I read through the standards, I do feel like the state has the standards right. What we expect from kids is pretty on target. What I know we do well at Byram Hills, and what we need to do at Wampus is, we really need to focus on children's reading comprehension, because reading comprehension sets the tone for so many other disciplines, and if children have the confidence to excel in reading, it's going to transfer into other disciplines. We have to balance that with having fun and learning. But we have to make sure that that high expectation for really comprehending what you're reading is there, and that is the message that we are really directly stating with our teachers and our parents.
Peggy, you've had an academic focus this year on literacy we're looking at, and also mathematics, just really getting deep into those. We think the standards are at least stable for right this moment in time, for the next three years, I'm anticipating at least, and that's about as far out as I'll predict. We could talk for a moment about the math program, we're in the first rollout phase at Wampus, our second year in the kindergarten and first graders. I guess just briefly, if you could talk a little bit about the math program and where you're seeing kids' levels of achievement in math with the new program compared to previously?
So the new math program that we have at the elementary levels really feeds into what's happening 612. The Investigations is a program that is designed to have an entry point for any single child, how they think about math, whether they think about it concretely, conceptually, linearly, however they think about it. The program is designed to allow them to enter into that level. What it also does is, it forces the child to think about math. If I think about it concretely, I need to see the connection to it conceptually. I need to see the connection from conceptual math to linear math. So all children are being asked to think about math in all these different venues. linearly, however they think about it. The program is designed to allow them to enter into that level. What it also does is it forces the child to think about math. If I think about it concretely, I need to see the connection to it conceptually. I need to see the connection from conceptual math to linear math. So all children are being asked to think about math in all these different venues, starting with the lens at which they relate to the most. And then to go with what Mary Beth was saying, there's a lot of games played in it. And the games can be applied in different ways and through different concepts. So the game is like the hook for the children to really love math.
Mary Beth, go on, please.
Sorry, I think that the games are also helping them to, you know, I remember saying to my parents, "How am I ever going to use this stuff in real life?" And I feel like the games are helping them see real-life applications with some of this stuff.
And the games also do a lot of the problem solving that we are also, you know, faced with. I always say to the children, "If you don't have a problem every day, you're not living." Social conflict is a thing that we need to tackle at this age.
You really say that to the kids?
I do, I do.
Well, now I know the fun school is creepy school. That much is clear now.
So you're appropriately at the kindergarten.
Happy to stay there also.
I am, too. It's my favorite point.
At Wampus, we need to do a mini-course on school finance.
We could do that.
Can you also talk a little bit about the collaboration between the different buildings and the different departments as far as creating these goals? Like how, you know, the goals that you have, how they then step into what you have, how it steps into HCC and so on? How do you collaborate on these goals so that there's some sort of consistency?
Right. So it starts at our administrative retreat room altogether. And so we talk about our mission. We talk about reflecting on the previous year's work. We talk about new initiatives that are growing from the district level. And then we started various teams working on those goals. So the buildings will work with across buildings, the chairs all work together. And then there's lots of sharing within that time. So we spend those two days collaborating in that way. And then throughout the year, conversation. So I'll go back to Mary Beth and Peggy. Andrew and I were just meeting today on our data dashboard, which I've talked about at the board meeting before. And we're beginning to roll that out and bring data in. And we're talking about some uses for it. So we could talk a little bit about today's meeting and how we're setting goals or at least thinking about how we use the dashboard aligned to our goals and coordinating those efforts across buildings. So Andrew, do you want to just set the stage a little bit for what our purpose was today? We were demonstrating the dashboard and what our expectations were?
Sure. Well, we're focusing today on looking at the interventions that we provide for students and where we can mark interventions along continuums of learning as it relates to specific assessments. So as we're looking at a student, we can say, using this piece of data, we want to see this much growth by this time. And here's the intervention we're going to use and look at the where we want to expect to see the student by a certain time point. So that we can look at the student over time and look at what supports mechanisms we're giving the student to see if they're growing appropriately where we want to. So our conversation today looked at what data sources we want to be able to have in the system so that we can effectively have all that information in one system. Right now, what's happening is we're going to a lot of different places, collecting that data, coming to a meeting and then putting that into a spreadsheet. And that spreadsheet is then all manually put in. We're trying to create the dashboard so it automatically pulls this data from all these different sources that are holding it. And then whenever a teacher logs in, they'll be able to see a student, but they'll see a snapshot of that student across many, many, many different criterias. So that they can see what their scores are in multiple math assessment products and ways. They can see their behaviors in a variety of ways, their ELA scores. So they're not just getting that one little sample that you might see within one product, but they're looking at it holistically and across multiple subject areas.
So this is in its infancy or this is in place?
In its infancy. I mean, it's, we have the dashboard and we're starting to import data. So the use of it is in its infancy, which we're just developing.
What data are you inputting besides the assessments?
State test scores.
So there's a variety of data that we're looking at. Some of them actually are things that the teachers do in the classroom, like reading assessments that they do. And then they just put the reading levels inside the system. Some of them are things like scholastic inventories and other things that we do throughout the year and benchmark either quarterly or maybe do at the end of unit assessments. So we're at the point right now where we don't know exactly what all the data is going to be in there. So we're starting with the big items right now. And we're going to slowly throughout the year start adding more and more. And then we're hoping by springtime, we'll have a pilot group of within math at this school, we can start looking at it so we can create a good model of how to use it. And then I see there's lots of other ways, once we have this in place beyond the intervention services that it can be used. It can be looked curricularly to see if there's gaps in our curriculum. It can be looked in a variety of ways to see overall grade level performances or school-based performances. So it doesn't have to be just at a student level. It could be at a teacher level, at a building level, or at a district-wide level, looking at our performance and looking at different benchmarks.
I guess the analysis of ELA and math scores that you gave to us and the region scores, I guess you could theoretically do that, but using real-time data in the classroom that you're collecting on an ongoing basis. And that's the purpose of it.
Yeah, I guess that would be my, just my concern is that it's, that you'd be looking at a dashboard of a student pulling on more than just their state tests.
A bigger profile.
Yes.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I hope our goal is to have, it might have some behavioral information, it might have attendance information, it might have a variety of indicators, whatever we decide is most important and most needed to be able to get the best picture of that student or group of students.
Who would have access to that? Only the teachers or?
So we can level the access based on what's needed. So the teachers would have access to their students and then the building principals could have access to the building. We can create access levels at any different level depending on what the individual, if a resource from teacher or someone that's doing certain interventions for a student or certain assessments on the students, they would have just those students that they would, that they're working with.
So we have not rolled this out with teachers yet. Right now, it's just Andrew's district administration and the principals who have access. We're going very slowly.
This is a perfect analogy to just-in-time inventory management. So you're essentially, you know.
That's very good, actually. That's right.
It's really, it's really impressive. Should we be able to get that, you know?
Will this be K through 12?
Eventually, right. We're starting K-5 because we have some need there on coordinating K-5s with curriculum, both in literacy and mathematics. We're going to start with some stuff we have and build it from there.
And then will the HCC faculty have access to that since that's where they're moving?
That's our goal. Yeah, that's our plan.
And harnessing the power of this data could be incredibly impactful. The two things that come to mind, just to, I guess, continue to be cautious about is just ensuring privacy and appropriate settings.
Yeah, that's all today.
And then, then just taking a step back and always giving kids the chance to sort of reinvent themselves. Because if you have so much data in the pigeonhole, somebody here.
Right.
And you're in a way that in this current system, you have a teacher that sort of takes the fresh perspective, means they have a couple of data points, now they're going to have this plethora of data. I wouldn't say that we don't want the data, we want the data, but just to use it in a wise way. Yeah.
It's such a common maturity.
I think I'm going to come in November and talk to you a little bit about all the data information security stuff that we're doing. And it's really a focus of ours this year, so we'll talk more about that then. But in the pigeonhole thing, when we look at the intervention services, there is always a way in and a way out. It's never that the student should stay in that pigeonhole or stay in that group. There should always be, it's always at a goal to get them out of that so that they don't need those interventions anymore. Yeah, you're right.
And that's our goal. And those are the conversations we have all the time.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you. Let's transition to our secondary and I'll talk to, let's have Kim and Chris talk together. I know you've heard a lot about our work with Challenge Success with Stanford University. And they were just in last week to speak with our faculty and speak with our parent community about the issues of wellness and the survey data. So let me ask Kim and Chris if you could just summarize what your learnings were from the Challenge Success survey last year? What were the big ideas? And what's the, if you had to say what your top one or two priorities are for the work with your faculty and students this year, what would it be? And we'll start with Kim and then Chris.
Big learnings. It provided us with an incredible perspective from the student's point of view in terms of their experiences, their lives, and what they were going through. So that was eye-opening. And it also allowed a lot of different people who are invested in supporting our students to have conversations and share ideas. I think some of our big takeaways, we learned that our kids feel very supported and connected to our faculty. We also know and saw that as some academic challenges and students begin to age and develop and grow up, they also develop more anxiety and stress as a result. That might sound like a no-brainer, but it also started to uncover even more nuances within that information. So we were able to take that as a faculty and identify some areas through a steering committee that we wanted to focus on. So each team this year was asked to consider some different areas, either homework, developing relationships with students to better understand as a community one another. It could have been screen time. And to take one of those areas and develop a wellness goal, each team, a discipline team and also grade level teams, and to spend the year really looking at that goal and fostering it and making steps forward and then assessing whether that goal is working and then revising it.
Give an example of what specifically invited.
Sure. So the faculty was each asked to develop the, that goal was called, they had steps called the Theory of Action. That comes from Tim and some of his work with me. We developed it and shared it with the faculty. So each team has developed a theory of action. For example, the music department's goal was to help students understand how music can help them, whether they're really musically inclined as they feel or not. And so there are steps that they're going to have them do a journal during the, during the year, reflect on some lyrics and some music together. And they were going to have conversations with their students as well. And the student outcome would be that students use music as a time to express themselves. They use music as a time to better understand their feelings and reinforce their emotions and deal with them. So that comes out of, say, the music department. Now, if you look at a grade level team, 7A starts to think about, they first wanted to, they thought, "We're going to help kids with learning spaces." And when I met with them about the Theory of Action, I said, "You know what, Kim? It's so much bigger than that. When we start to work with our kids, we realize what we want to do is really understand them as learners and help them understand themselves." So they are doing surveys. They are developing home bases to when they see that there are nuances that they can support students with. For example, first day of school, if some students didn't complete an assignment that was asked of them, they were simply asked to give reasons. And then those teachers were able to take some of the reasons that students provided. And then if it was organizational or not understanding the website or how to use the website, they actually took some students and helped them develop those tools. So the end result of, say, a 7A goal would be for a student outcome, that students would understand the tools that they have available that they can use. They realize what provokes anxiety or how they might be able to reduce anxiety using those tools. They might have more time because they have become better at utilizing those tools for free time. So those are all student outcomes that each team has developed based around our understandings of what Challenge Success provided us.
When Kim talks about this idea of the Theory of Action, what that basically is, is it ties a direct line between our actions to what the outcomes for students. And as you hear Kim describe these examples, she's talking about what the change in behavior we want from kids will look like based on our focus, say, on reducing stress and anxiety. So we're trying to really hold ourselves accountable for, this is our outcome and that's why we're writing our results of student outcomes. We want to see a shift in how students behave in their outcomes.
And this work was particularly important or useful. The Theory of Action was useful. So when you would sit down with a group of teachers or anyone and say, "What do you want?", they'd say, "Well, this is what I hope to accomplish." But it crystallized all the steps much greater. This is what we, our goal is, these are the steps that we are going to take. And as a result, this is, this is what we want for our students. So that really helped crystallize their plan. And also, how are you going to assess this work? What are you going to utilize to find out if it's really working, if students really are developing tools? And so that whole plan helped to really crystallize their ideas and move their work forward for the year.
What I hear from both Chris and Kim as they talk about this is that data could be overwhelming to a faculty when they get this feedback on this Challenge Success. It was sort of like, whoa, we're really hearing from kids and what they say. So we're trying to make it very concrete for teachers. And Kim's example of what she did with the faculty was saying, "Pick one area to focus on. Let's work on that all year and see if we can have an impact." And that's really powerful because when teachers start seeing an impact, that excitement grows.
So let me share what that looks like a little bit. This moved me because I worked in the middle school for 14 years before I went to the high school. And I looked at the Theory of Action. Kim shared them with us. But I looked at it for music. I know you started by talking about music. And they said, "If we as a team build our awareness of students' feelings and emotions and provide them with outlets to express themselves, then as teachers, we're going to have to design lessons that foster group and teamwork, make explicit connections between music and emotions, and discuss emotions connected to music." I have never heard these connections made before. And students will understand their role and its impact in a group dynamic and learn how to reflect on feelings, connect music's impact to their own wellness, feel they have voice, and learn how to express and channel emotion. So to make such student-centered goals in something like the music department, it hasn't been like that in the past. It's, we're trying to meet these standards and we're still doing that. But now we're actually saying, this has to be something that's meaningful. So I was moved by this Theory of Action plan.
Really remarkable work.
And was it general survey results around how kids were feeling in school that then led to each department coming up with something like this? Or was it specific survey questions that were linked to something as specific as this? How did?
It was the steering committee last year saying, "You know what? Out of all of this, here are the big takeaways that we feel are most important. Focus on homework. Homework is really stressing our students. Our kids are really overscheduled." So that was another, another focus point. A lot of our teams naturally started to lean towards one of the focal points of developing relationships and understanding our students and our students understanding, feeling like they have voice. So that was one that really keyed into some of the teams. But that also will enable our teachers to better understand how to support our kids in their lives and homework. They'll have conversations and understand some of what their students are going through and be able to process that and bring that into their instruction and their assessments as well. So that, it really came from the steering committees mining through all the work with Challenge Success.
I was just going to ask them, you could speak to the student involvement. And I was really struck by how empowered the children, while they're talking about it, and their involvement and how that helped.
In terms of, were there voice circles or just in general?
Well, I think, were they involved in the wellness committee, the steering committee?
So one of the goals of the middle school is to really empower our students. And it's through sale, it's through trying to provide other opportunities through leadership such as voice circles and through Challenge Success. So when we did the steering committee last year and this year, there are students who are active members who provide us with feedback and are decision makers. The voice circles that we have started to bring about is to allow and empower students so that their voices are heard, that they share each other's commonalities and individualities, and that they can become empowered to feel like they can give us feedback and are part of the decision-making in the school. So students have, we are now going to form a leadership group that is Voice Circle ambassadors, where we will train students to lead small groups to talk about different topics. Now, some of what we said was, how are we going to assess the team goal? How is each team going to know this is working? When it's, it's, sometimes you can't give a child a piece of paper and say, "Okay, let me know." So these voice circles will provide teams with an opportunity where they can develop three core questions that they want to know about their team goal. And through the voice circles, we could be taking some information about student feedback and teams will use that to refine their work. And it wouldn't be specific student answers, it would be more generalized student answers so that, because it's a little bit of a hybrid. Voice circles isn't supposed to be that you're gathering data all the time, but you can hybrid it in the sense that you can provide, that provides feedback to the teams and how they're doing.
I love how the little ones are being trained to get there. And I like to, you're training them in their weekly meetings with you to speak up and come up with ideas and be able to voice those ideas to the adults.
Even on a level, asking about a pool, no pool. It's very, very young.
Tennis court. So this is, Robin, you asked about how the goals are created and the coordination across buildings and this is part of a coordinated effort. I know Peggy has looked at what the expectations are in the middle school. Peggy having come from a K-2 building where, you know, she didn't have anywhere to look forward but was always conscious of preparing the kids for the next level, takes that responsibility greatly and I know has talked to Kim. And Kim and Chris have worked closely on challenge success, so they've been coordinating their efforts because we see this as a continuum, K-12, and that was important for their collaboration. So Chris, do you want to give us an overview of what you've learned at the high school level from the research study last year and some of your efforts?
Yeah, we're very excited about what we can do with the data. And the thing that really sold Kim and I on challenge success was the survey instrument that really would start all of the work and that it relied on the student input. And it wasn't the adults in the building telling the kids what they were doing, it was actually the kids telling us. And when we received the results back and we started to work on it, the other great thing about challenge success is that it requires all stakeholders in the community to be part of any solutions that are, that are needed. And for us in the high school, when we got the results back, we were surprised in some, some ways. We saw a lot of opportunities for growth in others. And really going through it in the last nine months, it really gives us the framework to where we need to change as a high school. So it looked at academic engagement, workload, sleep, parent expectations, teacher care, academic integrity, and extracurriculars. And it looked at all of those and it was a snapshot on the overall student experience at Byram Mills High School and the middle school. And the picture that it paints for us, that data, shows us that we have kids that are really good at doing school. They are very good and by all metrics, we are very successful in what we're doing. Our kids are getting into great schools, our GPAs are off the charts, our test scores are terrific. However, what it also shows us is that even though we are doing that, we have an opportunity to help our students be more well-balanced and an opportunity to create a different definition of success for our kids. That singular path that comes with great grades, great report cards, great transcript, great college acceptance, great job, great life. We have an opportunity to sway the way that we go about that now. And we're very excited about the work that is to come. And challenge success gives us a framework to look at that along with our steering committee. We look at student schedules and student use of time. We look at problem-based learning and performance assessments. We look at authentic assessments as a way that we can change their experience. We look at culture of care or climate of care, what are we doing to send the messages to them that we do care about their voice? And we look at the education piece, how are we educating students, parents, teachers? So we're very excited about it and we really feel like we have a lot of opportunities to, to change and grow with this data. And the kids' voices are at the forefront of everything that we do.
So Chris, you named a couple of structures like climate of care, authentic assessments, problem-based learning. First of all, why are those important? How do they relate to wellness for students? And can you give an example of something that might be in the works or something we're doing now? And I know there's some academic chairs who maybe can contribute to that work in your departments.
Yeah, so the other benefit of working with challenge success is that they've worked with over 150 schools and those schools all have similar profiles to Byram Mills. And they've gotten data back from 100,000 students or thereabouts. So we're really comparing ourselves to other, other places that are similar to us in many ways. And what they have found is that over time, the biggest impacts and the greatest changes occur when each of those areas are addressed. So when we look at something like student schedules or use of time, we, that's going to allow us to actually look at our schedule. Does our schedule promote that sort of well-balanced student? We look at passing time, does our passing time give our kids the indication that we care about them or are we running them like hamsters on a hamster wheel? How much time are we giving them to eat lunch? Is 26 minutes enough? Or are we sending the message that really your lunch and your nutrition isn't important?
Or can we at least get six panini machines?
We've got to give them, we've got to give another discussion today. So those are the deep dives that we'll take and those things, those changes may take a lot of time. Some of the quicker ones that we're doing are just the bell, implementing the bell, the change of the bell, going from the standard institutional get going bell to the kindergartner bell. We're partnering with, with University of Michigan and looking at ways that we can address the types of assessments that we have in our math class. So to move from the standardized tests that you'd see, summative assessments, and moving over to authentic assessments. And Lisa's been doing a lot of work.
I was going to ask that, Chris, which is, I, I heard what has been said now about what you're doing. And I was wondering, waiting to hear how the integration of testing played into all this because certainly student wellness lately has been tied into the claims of overtesting and too many tests and tested didn't tell you anything and, you know, it's an easy mark for parents, say, my kid just gets too many tests and, you know, in some respects, they were right. If Wendy Gardner was sitting here, she'd be all over this, but not having a proxy, I would just like to ask, how does that play into it?
So I think that the assessments that the kids are taking, some of the symptoms that we see are, they fall into the realm of academic integrity. So when we got our numbers back, we looked at all different ways that kids were trying to sort of do their best. And some of those ways came out as students cheating on, cheating on exams, getting answers on tests, helping each other on homework. So we look at that as a symptom and not necessarily the, the problem. So that is a symptom of kids feeling like what they're going through is, is not important enough that they need to step back and do it for the learning sake. They're doing it for that grade and moving on. So we feel that we have ways that we can address that, that would take away their need to sort of cheat in different ways. And a lot of those things are by project-based learning. Or an example would be in the robotics course. An authentic assessment is the competition at the end. Students are performing, they're building their robots to, to present in this contest. And, you know, I, I say it time and time again, in science research, we had one of our students who discovered a planet in another, another solar system without ever taking a summative assessment. So those sorts of projects and developments are really what we're trying to strive for. What we noticed though is that sometimes we have an AP curriculum or New York State curriculum or different standards that we need to hit. And we need to make sure that our teachers feel comfortable reaching those standards but still doing it in a way that, that gives kids opportunity to explore those, those things.
I'd like to, I'm sorry, you agree with what his eminence just reported?
So yeah, I thought that that would be a good point for me to kind of jump on. When Chris spoke about the robotics course or science research or some of the other things we're doing, not only in science but in many of our courses, is, we're starting to recognize that teaching, in a traditional sense, if we analyze that word, kind of has this meaning of, you know, a teacher showing up, organizing a lesson, delivering instruction, giving the students the opportunity to practice and then assessing how much they got from that. Now what we've done is we've shifted to have the students now focus on learning. Don't focus on the actual measurement stick of what that grade is going to represent. Actually look at now going through the process of learning. And some people would actually ask, like in a robotics course, can you teach grit? Can you teach creativity? Can you teach some of these other skills that have become so important and prevalent throughout society that we've been looking at? And the answer is, is it's not so much teaching. What teaching has become, from what we've learned through research, is the opportunity for teachers to create environments where we facilitate learning and the students have the opportunity to explore. And through doing that, whether it's solving a problem or entering a robotics competition, the way that the students approach every single problem that's presented to them is going to be different depending upon the team that they're working on, depending upon what the problem that they face at the given time is, or whatever task it is that they have to solve. So the focus then becomes, how do I do that? And what do I learn as a result of that? And it becomes a really nice, beautiful thing because it takes on a whole different look of what education truly is.
That's probably one of the best explanations.
That's a great answer. That was a great answer.
We need to film, to make this film and send it to a.
I don't think you were paying attention, but look, you really were. And you gave a great answer. That was a great answer. Really good. Thank you.
But yeah, what you guys all should be very proud of is, especially in HCC and the high school, more so than the lower schools, your teachers seem to truly care. They are always, for every parent watching, they are always available for help. And if your kid says they're not, call Chris Walsh or call one of the chairs. Every single teacher that I've, I've encountered through sixth grade through 12 will get, will be kind ahead of time, will stay in after, and they really create these relationships where these children are feeling safe.
What is that more important than in high school?
It's, it's not really offered as much and maybe it's a new program at Wampus.
Teresa was on the phone with me at 8:30 last, with the class meeting.
No, no, for your children to, to be self-empowered. For your children to be self-empowered. I, I don't think the children come in early or after school and maybe they do now in K-35, but I disagree.
If the teachers needed to, they would.
Absolutely, absolutely. But they should all be very proud that their teachers give way, way above and beyond and they create these relationships.
You know what's special is that here, I, I mean, I don't have the, the privilege of having my kids go here, but having been in a lot of other places and watching how things happen, not only do we have good teachers, but it is a special place that we are blessed to have wonderful faculty that is dedicated at all different levels that tailored to the needs of the kids. But the awesome thing too is that the investment made with the challenge success, a lot of people know what's broken in schools, but the difference is here, we're doing something about it. And that's really kind of what I admire because when you look back at other places, maybe where, you know, some of our kids go, the passion isn't there and to, to really make the difference. And I applaud everyone in the room and outside the room with the kids, like people really are passionate, but it's to try to continue to make that difference.
Your answer a few minutes ago really, really resonated with me. Seriously, that was wonderful. It really made something really clear I was wrestling with, so thank you for that.
And let me put an explanation on that. Now, Robin, you have a question, an exclamation point on that. In the robotics course, which is now in our second or third year of the course, in second year and first year of robotics too and robotics master, so we've created the STEAM courses at the high school. The teacher of that course asked students for some feedback and gave them some prompts. And this speaks to the nature of that course through a problem-based approach and an authentic learning where it's not, they don't take traditional tests in that course at all. This kid's response, let me just read this and I think it will hit home the point that Deb just made. The kid wrote to me, the first thing I think of when I think of robotics class is self-development as a worker and problem solver. It's a kid talking about his self-development as a worker. He's now a 12th grade student this year and this was talking about the class last year. We didn't get lessons or strict instructions, he calls them, strict instructions. We were given problems to solve and we had to figure it out. We could ask for help, but in the end, it was up to us. There weren't many hard due, due dates or any written tests. Nothing but work on your robot that you only got as far as your work ethic allowed it to. That is why this class was special to me. It allowed me to just work. You could work at your own pace and develop your own skills without all the stress of test and due dates. And this is a phenomenal kid who is now, maybe is he one of the masters in the masters class? So he's now teaching the other kids and going in that class as a teaching assistant. And that's his experience with lowering the temperature and this kid is a phenomenal robotics kid.
That's great.
Maybe not all kids are like that and we're not saying throw out all tests. So I don't think that's what Chris is advocating or any of the department chairs would. It's a balance. It's how can we create a balance in our systems? Lisa, you were mentioned a few times, so let's talk about math. Chris talked about your partnership with the University of Michigan and also some of the work you're doing to study with their College of Education. Talking about assessments as well and mathematics and grading practices and can we change that structure but still reach the high academic achievement that we expect in a mathematics classroom? Can you speak to that work a little bit?
Yeah, so I think as you all know, we've, we've gone to some colleges last year and the year before. And to Chris's point about doing school versus really being actively involved, and it's something that we're hearing across the board in colleges, they don't need students to come in with just more school, or they need students to come in and be able to problem solve. And that's really what we're looking to do as a mathematics department is get kids to be able to use mathematics to empower them, not just to do mathematics. So one of the opportunities that we've been, the beneficiary of is our relationship with the University of Michigan and our experience with their researchers in taking us through place-based learning. So that is a way for us and our students to use place, use space, use the environment to connect with mathematics and to use mathematics to describe problems that they would see. So for example, one thing you might see if you walk around in the next couple of weeks is us around with our classes, looking at the campus to see where might there be areas that flood and what could we do about it and use mathematics to justify that, right?
Sounds like a topic for a future board meeting.
On the other side, we're modeling sensors and looking at flow rates and using mathematics to justify that. And so what we've seen is that allows students to connect with mathematics in a way that they previously have not been able to. And then to Tim's point about the assessments, I think our rigor is still there and I think that's what you would see across the board in mathematics. You know, we're still seeing kids go into college, coming back with their, their BC Calc notebooks or their, their pre-Calc notebook saying, this thing was gold, you know, this thing was just great for me. But you're also going to see Bill LaRue on the field with these kids talking about vectors with these giant ribbons going across the field instead of just saying, here's a problem on vectors and we're going to give that two on a test, right? And then you're going to see the kids come back and make these amazing dioramas to scale the vectors that they did out on the field. And that's awesome and that's a way for them to connect with the mathematics and to talk about the mathematics in a way that they've not been able to in the past.
That's great.
Mathematics be true.
And it sounds like it does pick up with the middle school.
Graduating way too early.
If you come back anytime, I teach third and fourth period.
Can you imagine?
You may need to.
Four members all on the same class.
I think that would violate some federal state regulations if I sat down in your class.
I guess you're, I guess you're answering for me, I guess the, the thing that I was trying to hear because I have kids that have gone through the Byram Hills and their kids that went to college and they're, they are prepared, thank you all of you, they are prepared. And so I just, you know, I, I'm listening to hear like these kids coming up. I mean, I totally agree, they make them love the learning, it's about the learning and everything else, grades, whatever will fall into place. But, you know, I just want to make sure, but it sounds like what you're saying, that they will still be ready for college because it's still about, you know, for high school seniors, right? It's still about getting into, into colleges and stuff.
And some of it comes down to how you define rigor, some of it comes down to how you define readiness. You know, we spent a lot of time with folks at colleges with students, getting those one-on-one conversations or group conversations with students saying, did you feel you were ready? And the things that they really wish they had more of are not, I wish I had more tests, more lectures, right? It was, I wish I had more experience with project management application. I wish I had more experience with problem solving or working through problems that I didn't know how to do originally, like a robotics type of thing. That's the thing that we're hearing from them, we're hearing from undergraduate TAs, we're hearing from graduate TAs, we're hearing from professors, we're hearing from directors of programs.
And even, and even though like, you know, what you were saying, like starting in, in the, the lower schools with teamwork and having to be able to lead meetings and, and that kind of thing, I mean, great for everybody, you know, to have that be part of, you know, who theirs are.
I have a question, I have a question to ask. On page 39, there's something from the World Languages Department.
Do you know I predicted that you would ask her a question?
I thought I cut those out.
Melissa Starr, it's Melissa with us, oh, there she is. I think this is really well-written. My question for you was under the what category, you write, students will have the opportunity to engage in real-world applications that require a language production, awareness of global issues, and regard for cultural progress. I think it's great. What are we doing about that?
So actually, I have to bring a little bit about what I've done with global scholars because I used it as an area to experiment of what could be done. One of our issues is that we're middle career people and how we were taught to give foreign language instruction and how we've all received it is not what we need right now. So it's a matter of retraining the faculty as well. So I use global scholars as my experiment board. And for example, I did infographics and using the idea of different images with limited text to, in global scholars I did this, to tell the public or to take action or spread awareness on human rights issues. So I had a teacher come to me and said, I really want to do something, I'm in the box, something risky, what could you recommend? And I said, infographics on human rights. And she said, great. So she downloaded the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in French and she's doing it with her French five students and they're picking a human rights topic that they want to spread awareness of, developing infographic in French, creating them on Pictotart, which develops, it's an online platform that develops these very engaging-looking posters that have different images as well as text to show topics that are related to human rights. Prison, crime, racial incidents in prison, I can't think of anything, everything is a possibility. There's someone who's doing sex trafficking, for example, these, these issues that are a little not typical New York State topics for foreign language, poverty issues, anything related to civil rights. And they're thinking of, how can this be demonstrated using my level of French and an image related to that to spread awareness?
Students are choosing those topics.
Students are choosing these topics.
And in working through that, are you finding or are you beginning to find that fluency is increasing?
It's different. It's different because they're actually synthesizing the language at a different level. So instead of saying, what's your name? Do I have a Costa, please? You know, things like that. They're trying to figure out with their limited vocabulary. They're trying to figure out with their limited vocabulary, because if we don't teach certain vocabulary, just because it never comes up. So they're learning better circumlocution, and it's a problem-solving in a different way. So although they're not on the field looking at vectors, they're thinking, "How can I stress this with the limited vocabulary and grammatical constructs that I have?"
But you said circumlocution.
I don't see that in the report anywhere.
They don't even have that word in the resource anymore.
That has something to do with trains, I think.
Another, Aaron, would you like another example?
Yes, I would, Starr.
So in all of our Level III classes, we had worked with them with the concept of developing empathy, and what does that mean? So that's hard for a student to think about in their native language nonetheless, in a target language. So what we have them do is look at United Nations Sustainability Goals. There are 17 different ones of them. And we're using them actually as a basis for the Global Scholars program as well. They look at those goals, they find a current event that's related to those U.N. sustainability goals, and they look at the article or the news report in the target language. And then they're asked in the language, French, Spanish, or Italian, "Why is it important to care about this current event that's happening?" And these events aren't happening in the United States per se, but there are these global issues related to poverty, you know, gender equality, education, going on in all of those different countries that are out there. And our students are responding in the target language about that.
That's awesome.
So.
So, Chris, when you first talked about the Challenge Success work, one of the things that you pointed to was the fact that, you know, a lot of kids are doing school here at Byron Hills and in a lot of competitive schools across the country. I think one of the interesting things is that on college, a lot of competitive college campuses, kids are doing school, because in high school, you have the singular goal to get into the college. In college, you have the singular goal to do whatever it is you want to do afterwards, whether it's go to medical school, law school, go to teaching school, go to Wall Street, whatever it is. And so if you go that way through life, like, you're going to ultimately do yourself a disservice, because at some point, you're going to wake up and not have the tools you need just to cope. So I think if we can somehow get at that issue, it's an amazing thing to try to get at.
Yeah, we brought a team out to the Challenge Success Fall Conference this year. We were very lucky. We brought parents, students, administrators, teachers. And Mark Brackett happened to be the keynote speaker at this conference at Challenge Success, which really fits in tightly, nicely with what we're doing. And one of the things that he speaks about is that how at Yale, they had to create a class on happiness, because so many of their undergraduates were coming to them without knowing how to be happy, because they had been on this singular path of success ever since they were back in kindergarten in some cases. So we are seeing that, and we want to try to address it. And we want to try to make people feel assured that we are not going to lose what we have, but there are other ways that we can address it.
And I guess the question also, just about the work in general, so you have the Byron Hills system. We have a lot of control over what happens in Byron Hills. And then there's the system broadly. And the system broadly has many challenges, as we all know. I mean, if you look at 30 years ago, when, well, date myself, when I went through the system, the admit rates were double what they are today. That's, yeah. When I went to school, they were like three times.
Yeah, we had the shovels where we were writing with chalk on the shovels.
And, you know, we lived in a society where there are a lot of people, forget college couns, private college counselors in 12th grade, private college counselors starting in 9th grade. That's like the reality of the situation which we live in. So I guess the question for you is, like, how much room do, and SATs are still SATs, and they're not going away at least anytime soon, ACTs, same thing. How much room do we have within our system to try to do what we can, understanding the broader system? And then are there ways in which we can try to work to change the broader system? Whether it's, you know, coalition with other schools that are like us, talking to college admissions offices about the criteria that they use? I mean, I think some of this is starting to happen nationally to some extent, and I think it's pretty healthy.
Do you expect them to answer that in the next five minutes?
So I will say that when we talk about Challenge Success, people say, "Yes, we're all for it." And then at the end, they say, "But until you change the colleges, nothing's really going to change, is it?" And to some degree, we have a sense that there does need to be a more global change from the colleges. They do help us educate parents, because a lot of what our community believes is that there is importance in selectivity and in the rankings that might be problematic. And I'll let Mike speak to those. But we do feel that what we do in our system, that we can take away a lot of that stress, and maybe we leave it that the only stress the kids are feeling are what they do on the ACTs or the SATs. Certainly within the classes that they're taking with us, that we have a lot of control over, that we can sort of alleviate it. And we see that with certain courses that we have now. And these are ones that, you know, are core classes that colleges are looking at really intently. And we see that there are not, it's not across the board where kids are stressing out at the same level for all the courses that they need to get into college.
And let's go to our resident college expert, Dr. McGrath, and to speak about, you know, controlling. We can't control the system. We certainly, at this point, can't dictate to the colleges what to do. And they just have to maybe respond to us. But Mike is on the ground with people, with college admissions officers all the time. He's in touch with colleges, and at least the practitioners might be painting a little bit of a different picture. But can you give us some insight into that question? And are we on the right track with what we're preparing our kids for? And what are you hearing about the college expectations?
Thank you, Tim. And Scott, thanks for the question. We are on the right track. I agree with many critics, college admissions right now is stuck, and it needs to move. It needs to move to the positions that have been described beautifully by Mary Beth, Peg, Kim, Chris, and others. And they'll get there. The beauty of higher ed is the professors and the deans of the schools, if they were here, they would sound like Mary Beth, Kim, and Peg. The dean would sound like Chris or Jim. The professors want interdependence. They want professors to step up like Lisa and the folks to co-teach, Dwayne, Jennifer, and Melissa co-teach Global Scholars. They want teamwork. They want new, authentic assessments, and they're responding to the worlds of work. So the Goldman Sachs folks tell the professors with the business school, "You're deficient in developing future leaders in our company. We need you to change." And they're responding. So I'm happy, this is my guess, Scott. When we gather in four or five years, all the traditional indicators of excellence, grades, region scores, AP scores, and ultimately, high-end college admissions will increase because of all this great work. Simultaneously, student anxiety and stress will decrease. Love of learning will increase. And I'll close on Carol Jwett, because she's influenced many. The kids will move from a fixed mindset to a growth one. So I think it's an exciting time, and a lot of good things are happening.
How is the guidance department assisting in that?
Our battle primarily is on the field of anxiety and stress. So we do it, generally speaking, in two ways. We do it programmatically when we meet groups of students. And we'll say, "You don't need that many AP scores to go to the college that you want to go to. You need to take art. You need to take music. You need to spend more time with your family. And you need to join our theater group on weekends in the evenings." We also do it in individual counseling sessions. One of the great benefits of working with Michigan, we're all trained in cognitive behavioral therapy. So when I'm working with a student, we start the conversation off with, "Are you sleeping, eating, attending family functions?" And we look for the overload. And then we start to create a dissonance for the child. "I can't go to extra help." "Why not? Mrs. Pellegrino will think I'm dumb. Conversely, she'll think you're mature and responsive."
That's why we call it extra sessions. We don't call it extra.
Just so you know, that math department is packed. The wealthy ladies are in there, and it's packed. And no one thinks they're good.
I was wondering, you know, in the news that in the last few days, I guess, the key has been unlocked to the Harvard admissions by, through a lawsuit. They've had to reveal their formulae, et cetera. And I'm wondering whether that should any light to you about how some of these very high-functioning schools value what we're doing here now?
Well, it affirmed what we suspected, that high-end college admissions is not fair. It's not the meritocracy that we expect in the United States. This is a country that's dedicated itself to excellence. It's a principle that we live by. And when it's violated the way it seems to have been done, not only at one IBD school, but many, at a spiritual, intellectual level, it offends us. So I expect positive changes to come from this over the next few years. I think there's going to be less emphasis. There's going to be more objectivity and meritocracy, and that'll benefit students greatly.
Yeah? You don't think that'll lead back to the issue of quotas?
I think the real pressure's going to come from the professors. The real power in a university lies with the tenured faculty. It does not lie with the admissions office.
Not with the alumni?
Providing on the level of donation.
I don't know. It's a troubling issue, which is a little off-topic, but I was wondering whether the information gleaned from that litigation either validates or not the discussion we've had tonight. And not that Harvard can validate what we're doing, but whether or not they're thinking about what we're doing, I guess, is really what I would say.
I think we have to treat this like state mandates, right? They're going to come out constantly. Colleges are going to have their admissions criteria. But as a school, we can look at students and help students figure out what they like to do, right? I mean, that inevitably is what Chris was talking about, a study that we talked about recently with John Kleiman. Certain amount of students who applied to Harvard in one year, some got in, some didn't go there, some went somewhere else. These were all Harvard-eligible students, and they tracked them at a year, and five years, and 10 years. And these kids, whether they went to Harvard or not, were successful kids. And it's because they are a certain type of kid who wants to learn and grow, and that's what our focus needs to be, and our kids will find their way to whatever school.
I just want to say, I couldn't be prouder of the administrative team we've assembled here. I mean, you guys, girls, what have you, have been so impressive to us tonight. Your knowledge of the topics, the way you've articulated your positions, the way you've helped us understand what you're doing to a bunch of non-educators is just remarkable. So I thank you. This has been a, just a very, very enlightening evening for me. It really has been. Thank you.
And I'm proud of this team for, you know, we set ambitious goals.
Even Deepak.
And we set ambitious goals as a team.
Deepak, I'd like to translate. That means that you're currently Iowa's favorite. Melissa, I'm sorry.
Melissa knows I always phone her every year. She knows. She comes to me and goes, "All right, when's it going to happen?" But really, you're fantastic. Thank you so much.
And so let me defer to Scott and the board. I've exceeded my one-hour goal, so we've gone a little bit over. It was a deep conversation, and although we haven't heard from everyone, you know, it's the deepness and the level of conversation, I think, is very rich.
We'll give Robyn and Dwayne a shot next year, early on.
So we can make note of that. Scott, I would defer to you in terms of time, and if we want to wrap this up.
Yeah, unless anybody has any questions, otherwise it doesn't count. We really do appreciate you coming here tonight, and we know you have to get up early in the morning to start all over again. But what's amazing is when you think about the four schools and how these themes are so intertwined. And so when you take a step back and you think about, you know, the overall vision that you have, I mean, it's really incredibly well-thought-out, and that's what jumps out at me, and I think all of us as we listen to this, and I would echo what you said well, which is that we really can be incredibly proud of the steps that you're taking. And this is, these are not necessarily the steps that every school in America is taking. I think we feel great about the direction that things are going and the thoughtfulness and the compassion that goes into making these decisions. And so keep up the great work.
Thank you so much. Great.
Everybody should be back at 7:00 a.m. Or so. Nothing.
That's one of the highlights of the year, really.
Except maybe policy.
Except.
Oh, we're back. We're back tomorrow morning. Yep. We are.
All right, so I'll hand it over to Tim for the policy discussion.
Sure. This is second read, so these policies have, were, before the board at the last meeting, we have School District Records Policy Number 1120, and also a regulation, School District Records Regulation 1120R. So those two policies are before us. There was no regulatory changes. These were added to clarify data privacy, and we made a few tweaks to it. And in the process, we looked at some procedures that were not our actual procedures that through Susan's clarification, we rewrote a couple of sections to make sure that the procedures were updated as well. And that was, those were the only changes to that.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, so I would ask for a motion to approve the second read, and therefore approve the Policy Number 1120 and 1120R.
Second.
And 5500.
So moved.
All in favor? All right. Onto the Education Foundation.
All right. Acceptance of Byron Hills Education Foundation Folder Giving Grant.
Okay.
First, I'd like to speak a little bit about the grant. The Byron Hills Education Foundation, as you know, has taken on our K-12 goal of wellness for life. And this particular grant is for Coleman Hill Elementary School to have a pretty renowned speaker come in and work with students in classrooms, in small sessions, and in larger groups. His name is Robert Ribbost, and if you go online, you'll see that he does a lot of play activities with children, mostly to help them self-express, to collaborate with others, to understand their emotions surrounding different situations. And it's like a nice little toolkit that we're giving kids in a very fun way to start to help them navigate some of those relationships at the elementary level. Mary Beth Croupy did quite a bit of research to find this person and vet this person, and we're really excited that we can consider this wellness initiative even at a kindergarten level. Where we think kids are just having fun, but they're learning and growing and challenged, like anybody else.
And this ties well into the discussion we just had in the theme of what's going on in all of our schools. So, if anybody has any questions with that, I would say, motion to accept with gratitude the $7,500 gift from the Byron Hills Education Foundation.
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you, BHGE.
Again.
Yeah, again, that's right. Again, thank you.
All right. So on to 12.2. So I guess just on this front, the School Board Association, New York School Board Association, convention's happening on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And we'll have representation at the Thursday session, where there'll be some interesting things, including a lot of information about school law. Friday session, and then potentially the Saturday session, which is the business meeting, if schedules permit. And I guess I would just say, if anybody has any comments or questions about the, you know, various bylaw amendments, which could also change on the floor, so it's a bit of a fluid process, let me know. Or if anybody wants to have a discussion now on anything, let me know. A lot of them, you know, center on flexibility from state mandates and on school safety. But if not, then I think we can report back after we.
Is anyone planning on attending the business session?
So I'm going to try schedule permitting. I'm definitely going to be at the convention, but.
Well, I would think the board should authorize Scott or if Laurie decides to go to be a voting member if they decide to stay for the business meeting, using their best judgment in what you believe the Board of Education would support and guarantee no one will second-guess you. Seriously, you should have that authority if you want to stay and be in the meeting. We shouldn't have to call a special meeting to do that. You should do it.
Okay. Great. All right. And we don't need to talk to that? And this is to set the agenda for the School Board Association. It's not to pass anything. It's really to set their Legislative Action Committee agenda. Okay, so with that, should we go on to Item 12.3, the Jean Bissel Plaque Proposal?
Sure thing. So the board has copies of a proposal sent to me by Matthew Gabel, who, for the public certification, is the person who spearheaded this effort and wrote the original open letter requesting that we name the theater after Jean Bissel. And we had a board vote at our last meeting not to name the theater after Jean Bissel. I did have a comment at the end that originally the board and I had talked about, perhaps a plaque in the Theater Hall of Fame that would really describe this teacher. a plaque in the Theater Hall of Fame that would really describe this teacher and the contributions he made. We were so moved by so many people who wrote to us, people who came into the audience. And while I know that some people did leave disappointed, I think that, from what I'm hearing back from people, that they understand the weight and magnitude and difficulty of making such a decision.
Can I just interject briefly? After our discussion, when we took a break, I got to speak to a couple people, and while they were, in a sense, disappointed, but they also were very appreciative of the thoughtfulness and the thoroughness of our considering the issue and our discussion. So I think the system actually worked the way we planned it to work, whichever way the vote went. I think it worked. I think we should be proud of the way it was handled.
There was a significant amount of work that went into thinking about this, developing policy, developing a vetting process, having discussions about the future of this district and the past of this district, and hearing the voices of alumni, which...
And while this is clearly a board decision, I think we should also thank the administration for your diligence and leadership and vetting and all. I think you discharged the role we envisioned you would have when an issue like this came up, so you really helped it work also.
Thank you. Matt Gable had sent, and the board can see the attachment, an attached design rendering. And the design rendering, the proposal for it, is 18 by 24 inches. The first thing I'd like to talk about is the language on it. Members of the public can't really see this tonight. However, the language is Gene P. Bissell, 1932 to 2012, in loving memory and tribute. Mr. Bissell was an extraordinary music teacher, theater director, mentor, and friend to the students and community of Byram Hills. Within this theater between 1968 and 1987, he created magic, joy, and a sense of belonging for all. Through his boundless energy and pursuit of perfection, he motivated students to achieve the highest standards of excellence, helped them find their voices beyond the stage, and became a lifelong inspiration to them. In so doing, he laid the foundation of an enduring Byram Hills High School theater tradition. And I love that language. I think it captures what I have heard the alumni say.
I do, too. I think it's good.
Now, in what they sent to us, though, they're not paying for this. The alumni are not paying for it.
Well, one issue before we move on to that, there are two things that I would like the board to think about. They wrote, "Presented by Byram Hills High School Stage Alumni." But Mr. Gable indicated in his email to me that it will cost about $1,500, but, to quote his words, "Given the administrative logistical difficulties to raise small individual donations from our grassroots supporters, our request is that the district covers the $1,500 fabrication and shipping costs."
So what I wanted to say because of that is, you know, if this will pay for it, it's really, you know, we'll have to, you know, the wording really is up to the district. And also, I would just change, maybe, I think Jen, you had mentioned, maybe inspired by the alumni.
Right. Technically, it should probably not be presented by the alumni if the district is paying for it, but it was certainly inspired by the alumni. So I think that that was appropriate to say. And then, obviously, the date is going to have to be whatever date we are determining we need to put this up, and this is dependent on theater renovations. I know that Mr. Gable had indicated he would like it to be April 2019. We have to now go by the building. And also, it's going to be as per, I know that there was some direction given to me as to how Mr. Gable would like this plaque presented. I am deferring to the building principal and the director of Fine Arts.
I think that's who decides.
And that decision needs to rest with them in that building.
Exactly.
So I just wanted to inform the board of that. I'm going to move forward with this plaque. And I just have to say that I am very proud that the words of the alumni are really echoed so strongly in this plaque.
Yeah. That's great. How come?
Do we need to vote to expend the funds for this?
No.
Nope.
It's undermined.
Okay, good.
I have a quick question. When the alumni were here, many of them, when we took a break, had approached us, or at least me, and asked if there was something they could donate. Some of them were talking about a scholarship. Did Mr. Bissell ever consider that, or was he asked about that?
Mr. Gable.
Mr. Gable. Sorry. Was Mr. Gable...
I had asked him that explicitly, only because I knew that he had positioned himself as the person who was advocating for this. And I informed him that many of the people who were here that night were talking about generating a scholarship. He said that he is not interested in coordinating that scholarship. So to that end, if there is anybody who was here, or any other alumni who would like to work on that effort, I made an extension that night to open my door to continue this relationship with the alumni, and whether it's through that scholarship or something else, I encourage it, because I would like to have the connection that I saw for one of the first times in history between our district currently and the alumni who went here. And any way that we can continue to foster that relationship, even if it's about this scholarship idea, would be fantastic.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right. On to staff reports.
And now to me, again. First, I wanted to bring to the board's attention just a few activities that have gone on recently that we're very proud of. We had our PTSA Working Parents Committee last week. Tim and I met with the working parents. It is just a great opportunity. It's a small group that comes out, but to us, it doesn't matter how small the group. The fact that parents want an outlet to the schools and they want to be heard is what matters to us.
It's 15. That was a decent size.
Last year, at this time, the Working Parents Committee asked that we can put Principals' Coffees online. We have done that. So we're really trying to continue to bridge this relationship with home. And as working parents, you know it's difficult to do that, so you like to have those opportunities.
The feedback, Jen, sorry to interrupt you, the feedback that I've gotten from several of the parents is just wonderful, because they don't have, their schedules are tight, and to have that opportunity was really well received. So I had several points of feedback and appreciative for the work that you and Tim, the time commitment to doing that.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Also, continuing, that night, we talked about initiatives in the district, and we also talked about security. And today, I started the first of the four Principals' Coffees on a security update. I highlighted what the board goals were regarding security and talked about efforts that we've made as a district, supported by the board, between last year and this year for specific security enhancements at each building. That part was not recorded on video, because we don't want everybody to know what our security plans are. And I will have their remaining three meetings in the next few weeks. Andrew Taylor, on the topic of security, indicated to you tonight that he will be coming to our next board meeting to talk about cybersecurity, another board goal for this year. Tonight, we're also supposed to talk a little bit about the board retreat. The board retreat is coming up November 13th at 7:00. The board is planning, last year, we went through an extensive review of our committees, consolidated some committees, and now, this year, we're taking that list, and we're going to look explicitly at what the explicit charges are of each of those committees and determine those charges together in our board retreat. And the board, of course, is welcome to share any other topics that they would like covered at that time. But it's nice for the public to hear that the board is actually getting together to look at the committees that they're on and to reexamine the function of those committees. Oftentimes, when you have a board of education, they will just continue to do the same board roles for years on end without actually self-assessing whether or not these committees are doing the job to meet our school mission. So you are. And the other is lower Hudson Council advocacy. I was at a meeting the other day. As you know, we have, Lower Hudson Education Coalition has adopted Ostroff Associates, and they are looking at some specific topics, such as the Salt Cap and the coalition that is moving in that direction. And they came to the Lower Hudson Education Group to ask our thoughts about their process moving forward. And in that same vein, charitable contributions, we received an email from Congresswoman Nita Lowey, who thanked us for our efforts on the IRS's proposed regulation, and she wanted us to be updated directly on her efforts in Congress. She's hosted several local forums, and she shares concerns about consequences of failing to preserve full deductibility of state and local taxes. And this month, she sent a letter urging the IRS commissioner to amend the proposed regulation before it is finalized. So I thought it was important that everybody know that she is also behind this effort. Yeah? And that is...
We'll know a lot more about that in a couple weeks.
All I have.
Nothing additional for me?
Yeah, no, Tim, I think you could.
You know, I can't speak right now.
He needs an Uber.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Thank you. It took an hour and 10 minutes of your time.
And it was well done, Tim.
Yeah, very well done.
It was very well done. It was a wonderful discussion.
Amazing people to work with.
Yeah.
See why I have so much fun doing this, Jen.
Too much fun.
On to board reports. I have a 30-second board report. First, I went to a West Justified School Board Association meeting where we met with Regent Johnson, who's our area regent, who I thought did a really good job in articulating some of the issues that we all face in this region and that we care about. And she's really our advocate, I think, on many of these issues. She encouraged us, and Tim, we should talk about participating in the commissioner's, I guess, trip around the state regarding APPR, because they are in listening mode, and they do want to hear from the field, and so...
Have some folks, too.
Good. So she encouraged us to be vocal. And then she also talked a lot about educating the whole child, a lot of the theme, you know, that we heard here tonight. And lastly, she, I think, wants to, you know, hear feedback, if we have feedback, so her door is always open. And then, secondly, BHGF, they continue to be, like, very happy about our new system of rotating through the meetings, but they do need a point person just for purposes of their letterhead and their website, and just to have kind of one person that they list. So we just have to figure that out. If anybody has interest in being that person, let me know. Otherwise, perfect. Okay. Great. Done.
I'm going tomorrow night to that meeting.
Excellent. I think I go in December.
I think I go next September. I'm not sure.
Anybody else have any committee reports, or...
Very quick report on Athletic Advisory Committee, which was last Friday. Rob gave a thorough review of homecoming and between the coaches, student that was there, and the parents. I mean, the feedback was absolutely fabulous for the night games. I mean, the temporary lighting, the enthusiasm that the students had, a number of students that can't go to other games but can go to night games. The turnout for girls, Field Hockley was tremendous. The, I mean, just all positive feedback. I think that, you know, that led to a discussion in that committee from some of the parents, and certainly coaches, about permanent lighting. This was, you know, a pilot, a way to see what works and doesn't work, and I think it was really, really constructive feedback. And, you know, there are lots of constituencies to acknowledge when we're doing something like that. So certainly, this was a great pilot. I think wildly successful, and I was just thrilled to hear the positive feedback and no complaints. I mean, I think it was a wonderful way to bring our community together. And the idea of school spirit and building that, it was probably, at least since I've been in the district, one of the best homecoming periods of time. To have the week versus just a weekend, or several nights during the week, I think it was great. So the other thing I'll mention in and around school spirit and Bobcats and the boosters is that they have now the Bobcat of the Month. So with the Twitter feed and some other ways of publicizing and Instagram, they're publicizing the Bobcat of the Month, who is an athlete that, for a variety of reasons, gets accolades. And I believe it was Joe Saglin Betty.
Yes. The originator of the...
The originator of the lights, right?
Of the lights. Yeah.
Which was wonderful. And there was a lot of pride. He was at the meeting, and it was great to see him. You know, he got a lot of congratulations about it.
That's so great.
So it was really nice. It was a great way to honor some of the athletes, and I think it's a great idea.
In the past week, we also heard that Callie Hoffman was nominated by LoHud for Player of the Week, Team Success by scoring 20 goals and making seven assists.
Actually, she's up to 20. She's up to 22 or 23.
22 or 3? Oh, yeah, we did have the two games.
I just want to piggyback for a second on Mike's side. I want to congratulate the administration on their foresight to have these night activities and homecoming, especially night athletics. This has been, at least to me, an issue for a long time, and we couldn't even try it. And I think the fact that we tried it, and I think the fact the results were so positive, you know, we can have a thoughtful discussion about it and see what, which way, if any, we want to take it. But at least we know it's doable, and we know that there are certain segments of the Byram Hills community that really can now come and watch their children play. And for school spirit, I think an evening game on good weather is just fabulous. So I want to thank the administration for taking this first step anyway, and seeing how this can be done. I haven't given a full sports report, but since the season's now over, I can say just congratulations, three teams that just stand out. One, and I haven't mentioned this team in quite a while, is the boys' football team. They had a great year. Congratulations to the coach. Congratulations to the team. The Winover Harrison will be long remembered. You guys had a great year, and if we can figure out a way to get you into B next year, you could run the table and really make a shot at a sectional title. But irrespective of that, congratulations. You really brought a lot of pride to yourselves and your coach. You're well done. The boys' soccer bowed out in the sectional quarterfinals with a tough 2-0 loss to Pearl River. Another good season. You know, we take for granted every year they're going to make it to the sectional finals. Some years it happens, some years it doesn't, but Tamara Allen and his coaching staff, and above all the players, congratulations on a fine season. And the girls' soccer team had a great year, and they lost one of their better players early on, and Soljenon without her. They lost a heartbreaking 2-1 double-overtime game to Ananouet. It was just, you know, I saw the highlights. It was thrilling. The girls played well. They had a wonderful season. They really, as a team, developed. They just came along as a team. So again, to the coaching staff and the players, you made yourselves proud. Congratulations. And believe it or not, the winter season is not too far away, and the year just flies along. But I was going to congratulate...
It's preseason tonight.
That's what the crowd was in the cafeteria, yeah. So anyway, exciting end of season. Sectional play is always exciting, and to those teams and all the teams that compete in the fall, well done. Congratulations.
I went to the BHGF meeting on October 10th, and we talked about, we heard the board proposals, the school proposals for the different grants, and one of them we just heard about tonight, the Coman Hill one. It was really interesting. They had the speaker, the challenge success speaker, last Wednesday, right, 7:00? And they were talking about some future speakers, and they seem to be really putting in an enormous amount of effort to publicize themselves and get their name out in the community. And they're doing a lot of events. They did the Captain Underpants movie night, and they're doing a lot of different events that they haven't done in the past. It's great. They're doing a lot of community outreach.
Yeah. And I was saying at that meeting, two summers ago, when we had the eclipse here and we had a couple hundred people outside, was the real wake-up call to me that we needed more community events. So we don't know, you know, we'll continue with this light program in the spring. We'll have some conversations about that. You know, we've had conversations about the costs moving forward, and they're very prohibitive for a percentage of students who play sports, all those things to be considered. But they don't matter. What matters is that we have as many community events as we can that people are interested in. And I think that Education Foundation is doing one heck of a job to contribute to that. And parents were saying that. They're like, you know, we're only in the second month of school. We've been to a Wizards game and a movie outside, and, you know, there's a lot of activity for them to be doing.
They work very hard.
They do.
They do a great job.
Anybody else?
November 14th, I guess. November 14th. I was going to get it's not tomorrow. Sorry.
On item 15, communications to the board, there was one regarding a question on student eligibility. And then with that, I move to 16, which is approval of board minutes. And then with that, I move to 16, which is approval of board minutes. I get a motion to approve the minutes from October 9th.
So moved.
Any one second? Second? Anybody have any comments?
Hold on, hold on. I have a question to the board. And it's, I'm not sure if there's a right way or a wrong way, but I just noticed when the vote was recorded, it was recorded as a sum total that indicating how each board member voted. And the question is whether or not you want the vote to be recorded showing of each board member voted? Or you, or you like... I mean, for example, the vote, and this is just an example, the vote on the theater naming was 6-1, which is fine, but it didn't indicate the six, it didn't indicate the one, just the board vote was 6-1. Going back, I believe the vote always indicated the people who voted, the names voted, as opposed to simply the aggregate vote. I mean, I'm not sure if there's a requirement.
Was there a reason?
Is there a requirement around that?
Is there a requirement?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Technically, I think because we record it, we don't even have to do minutes.
Well, is the recording kept for, basically forever?
Yeah.
It is?
Yeah.